Good morning. Welcome to the Senate District 16 Joint Meeting. Great to have the county commissioners from all of our counties, Multnomah, Tillamook, Washington, Yamhill, Clatsop, and Columbia. And I see we have lots of visitors also. So I'm looking forward to the meeting as we move forward. The ground rules are for visitor statements, you get one minute, and please do not go over that. We have a timer and we also have, I have the authority to reach out and gavel you if you're not good. No, I don't even have a gavel. I gave my little gavel to Henry last week. So we will be as efficient as possible as we move through this meeting. And I will open to public comment. If you have public comment in the chat, it asks that you please put your name and your city of residence in the chat if you would like to speak. Do you see, I don't see anybody in there, do you?
Yes, we have Dave Ambrose from Clatsop County.
Well, welcome, Dave Ambrose from Clatsop County. You are on for some public comment. And despite the fact that I haven't seen you for a really long time, you only get one minute, Dave.
Okay. Well, I want to put in my vote for selecting Nadia Gardner as our next senator. She's proven to be a well-organized person. She's got a lot of experience in the planning end of our great state. And she'll make a great senator for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ambrose. Anybody else?
Madam Chair, could we ask all those not speaking to mute, please?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, please. If you're not speaking, please mute so that we don't get a lot of extra noise. Also, if you are having any technical difficulties, sometimes it's a good idea to turn your camera off for a while. All of these platforms don't necessarily work as well as we would like them. Anybody else?
Chair McGruder, Yamhill County Commissioner Lindsey Bershauer is on.
Great. Thank you. I think J.C. is keeping track on the platform as to who all is on. Any other preliminary comments? And I am looking, I am guessing that Rachel Armitage, Melissa Bush, and Nadia Gardner are all on. Yep. Are. And all right, then we will begin the festivities. And we will begin with the nominees' opening statements. You will have two minutes each, and it is in alphabetical order. So we welcome first Rachel Armitage.
When I was a kid, I remember packing food boxes in the church lobby for families who had recently lost their jobs due to a local sawmill fire. I witnessed firsthand the power of community to help hurting families get back on their feet. I also grew up witnessing the decline of the timber industry in southern Oregon. Although the community always came together, it sometimes wasn't enough. Over the years, I watched as families lost their livelihoods and as funding dried up for important services like education, roads, and public safety. By the time I left home, I knew I wanted to make a difference by addressing policies in Salem that left families like mine behind. Once hired as a legislative assistant in the Oregon Legislature, I helped relating to jobs, housing, education, fair wages, and the rights of foster youth. Right now, our district is in desperate need of solutions, and not just in February. After the legislative session wraps up in March, people will still need the help of their state senator with all kinds of pandemic-related constituent casework as they have for the last two years. My legislative experience will allow me to hit the ground running with a focus on jobs and housing and spend the rest of the year connecting constituents, businesses, and local governments with critical resources. As a kid who wore hand-me-downs and couldn't always afford the cost of school lunch, you can count on me to be on the side of working families who need someone in Salem looking out for them. I also hope to be a partner to you, leaders who know this community best. I look forward to continuing the conversation this morning.
Thank you. The next speaker is Melissa Bush.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and Commissioners. My name is Melissa Bush, and I am seeking the appointment to be our next senator for Senate District 16. In this time of great change in our district, I bring professional experience, ability for complex problem-solving, and a proven record of courage in the face of seemingly insurmountable challenges. When I was 15, living in my Midwestern hometown in Kansas, I found myself in the local public health clinic where a nurse told me I was pregnant. I spent the months that followed preparing to become a young mother, but ultimately found I wasn't able to be the parent I wanted to be at the time. Instead, I chose to expand my family beyond blood ties, planned an open adoption for my daughter, and became a birth mother instead. As a teenager making pregnancy and parenting decisions, I was introduced to the ways in which policies impact our personal lives. Now, 25 years later, as a nurse myself and a mother of a beautiful blended family, I have come to understand that connection even more deeply. My nursing practice takes me into patients' homes here in Senate District 16 and into their private lives. Before and throughout the pandemic, I have shown up for them in their most vulnerable moments. Every day, I see the impact of policies and systems that are not working for our families, our children, or elderly and disabled. You see, I know what makes us sick. It's not just bacteria and viruses. It's unstable housing, food insecurity, stagnant economic opportunities, and all the daily struggles that create deep divisions and leave folks across our district feeling left behind without real choices. That is why I want to ensure equal access to the essential needs that will help our families continue to thrive. From St. Helens to Seaside to Tillamook and beyond, I will fight for living wage work, stable housing solutions, dependable childcare and elder care, fully funded public education with a career path forward, and quality comprehensive healthcare for all. I am ready to stand up and advocate in Salem for the critical needs of our diverse and expansive district, and I'm ready to work together to move our communities forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Right on time. The next speaker is Nadia Gardner. Welcome, Nadia.
Thank you. It's so great to see 100 friends, old and new in the audience, including county commissioners, both current and former, as well as other community leaders. This is a sign of a healthy democracy, people. My name is Nadia Gardner. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a lifelong Oregonian and a 20-year North Coast resident. I live in the unincorporated community of Arch Cape, which is on the border of Clatsop and Tillamook Counties on the North Coast. I'm an experienced public servant, having worked in local government and nonprofit organizations my entire 25-year career. I'm currently the Chair of the Clatsop County Planning Commission and an elected director on the Arch Cape Water District Board. I'm a scientist. I have expertise in forests, rivers, estuaries, and the ocean, and how they support our communities. I'm a project manager with a background also in policy and economics. My many years in the district, local government experience, and scientific approach make me uniquely qualified and able to succeed in the Senate position. My top policy priorities center around meeting our people's basic needs in this time crisis. We must provide affordable workforce housing because our businesses can't find workers and there are too many homeless families in our communities. As a working parent of a six-year-old son, I know we need more quality childcare. Our schools and hospitals must be fully staffed. We need family wage jobs as well as the education and training needed to do them. We must be better prepared for flooding, earthquakes, and tsunamis. I'm running because this is a critical moment, and I am the dedicated, knowledgeable, and experienced candidate to bring forward the right solutions with your help. Solutions to these challenges must be addressed at multiple levels. As your senator, I will step up and work with others at the local and state levels to introduce solutions and bring in funding that will lift up everyone in our communities. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, anybody who is not muted, please mute. We don't want any hot mic comments made here. And we don't want any interruption of the speakers. So please mute yourself if you are not speaking. All right, we now get to move into the very exciting part of the agenda, and that is Commissioner questions. And each county is allowed to ask the candidates two questions, two minutes each question. This will be an interesting process with six counties. So the counties will go in alphabetical order. So that means Clatsop County begins. I don't know if Commissioner Quill is leading the charge for his team or whether he's letting them self-select here.
We actually will ask the questions on behalf of Clatsop County. Thank you, Commissioner McGruder, and welcome to the nominees. My name's Mark Quill. I'm the Chair of the Clatsop County Commission, and I've got a couple of questions for each of the nominees. I'll start with Rachel Armitage. The question is, tell us about your experience with rural Northwest economies, specifically farming, forestry, fishing, and maritime commerce.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. As you all know, I grew up in southern Oregon. I'm a lifelong Oregonian, and so most of my experience comes from growing up in Medford and also being a proud Columbia County resident. And to that end, I have had the joy of experiencing Clatsop County on multiple occasions. You know, we absolutely love to visit there. I've spent time there with my family. And here's what I know about Clatsop County. I know Clatsop County in particular was built by proud workin' folks. People I've had the pleasure of meeting at places like the Workers Tavern in Victoria. And we have six counties in this district, all of which are very diverse and very unique in and of themselves. But within that, I think the North Coast is a particularly special place. And I know that Clatsop County relies heavily on fishing and timber and tourism. And I would love to know even more. I think the learning has really just begun, which is truly exciting. What I can tell you is that, you know, were I to be appointed, it would never be my legislative agenda. It would be our legislative agenda, and that very much includes Clatsop County.
Thank you very much, Rachel. And then, Melissa Bush, the same question to you. Tell us about your experience with Northwest economies, specifically farming, forestry, fishing, and maritime commerce.
Thank you, Commissioner. So my understanding of the economies of the North Coast is that they rely heavily on all of the things you just mentioned. And I know that there has been a tremendous amount of work, particularly around forestry as of late, in terms of people coming together to really work on making sure the economic viability of the communities are first and foremost, while also taking into consideration some of the concerns around conservation. I've been really excited to learn more about that, and I think that that's excellent work to assure that we are meeting those economic needs while also taking into consideration some of the concerns that have at least been shared with me from community members. In terms of fisheries and maritime, those are both things that I look forward to learning a lot more about, and I'd be looking to the experts to teach me more about those areas because, as I have said, my area of expertise is as a nurse. And what I have seen in the economy is more of the impact when some of these things start to become less viable and how that impacts the lives of the residents in our communities. So I would certainly be looking to the experts to help teach me more along those lines and make sure that we're advocating for those things in Salem. The last thing I would mention is that I am also hearing a lot about how, one thing that you did not mention, tourism and the impacts of tourism on the community in the North Coast in particular, and the need to both balance that economic interest for the community while maintaining livability for the residents of the North Coast. So these are all things that I know are first and foremost in the county, and I look forward to working with the commissioners on those issues if appointed.
Great, thank you, Melissa. And then lastly, Nadia Gardner, and I'll go ahead and repeat the question, even though you probably know what it is, but it's, tell us about your experience with rural Northwest economies, specifically farming, forestry, fishing, and maritime commerce.
Thank you, Chair Quill. I, of course, I've lived on the North Coast for 20 years, and I know that the culture and history of the North Coast is really rooted in those industries, in farming, in agriculture, in fishing, and in forestry. And more recent times, as noted by the other candidates, tourism has kind of risen up as a larger part of our economy. I'll just start with my personal experience. I am an avid vegetable gardener. I have chickens and a big garden, and raise most of my own food about nine months in the year. My kale just about petered out just now. And I'm a big supporter of our local farms, getting Bennett milk in glass jars and Zweffel eggs from Tillamook, participating in our local farmers' markets, and supporting the Food Roots and North Coast Food Web, which are all supporting our local smaller farms. Of course, I always loved my Tillamook ice cream and all that. In terms of fishing, again, like many of my friends here are involved in the fishing industry, and I know of its importance. Of course, crab is a hugely important fishery for the entire state, whiting, groundfish, pink shrimp, which is one of the most sustainable pink shrimp fisheries period in the world. You know, those are all important, both culturally and economically, to our communities and are all challenged by a variety of things in our changing climate. And I, as a scientist, have really been keeping an eye on that and trying to understand, okay, so here in terms of our environment, what's changing, and what does that mean in terms of our local economy, and how can we maybe mitigate some of those effects in the long term? Terms of forestry, also, I bring it back to myself. I'm actually a small woodlot owner here in Arch Cape. I have 20 acres and have done a small timber operation there about five years ago, and so I have that personal experience as well as many years of experience working for Land Trusts that did timber work and worked also with partners, the Nature Conservancy and others, many of things. So I think I have a pretty deep understanding of these issues, and I look forward to learning.
Nadia, please. Time has been called.
It looks like the time is up, Nadia. Thank you. And then, on behalf of Clatsop County, we have a second question, and I'll start back with Rachel Armitage. How do you plan to engage people with opinions different than your own and seek to create common ground and teamwork?
That's a great question, and that is something I have quite a bit of experience with, not only, you know, working on campaigns, but also working in the legislature. You know, were I to be appointed, it wouldn't be the first time that I talked to somebody either on their doorstep or over the phone who disagreed with me. And in fact, you know, when I go home down to Medford, I share the dining room table with people who don't really agree with me politically. And I love having conversations with, you know, my family members and friends of the family about where we do agree. And I actually love checking in regularly about where that common ground is. And I think it's just so important to start there. We really can do a lot just by starting in that place. I am somebody who tends to believe that win-win scenarios are out there, and we just have to find them. So for me, it's really about listening, gathering information, and approaching those conversations with a real sense of curiosity. I also think it's incredibly important just to make people feel heard and to be straightforward. So if we don't agree or if something's just not possible, I think being able to explain why and explaining the rationale behind those choices also goes a long way.
Thank you very much, Rachel. And then the same question to you, Melissa. How do you plan to engage people with opinions different than your own and seek to create common ground and teamwork?
Excellent, thank you. Well, I would say this is what I do every day and the work that I do as a nurse. I have, it is part of my professional training to meet people where they're at, regardless of their personal or political beliefs. And so I really have an excellent understanding of what it takes to put my own opinions and viewpoints aside and actively listen to the concerns of other people. I am very skilled at working as a team. That is also one of the critical parts of being a nurse. We work together to solve problems, and we work together regardless of how we might feel about one another sometimes because that's part of the work that we do. I actively look for opportunities to hear from people who have different viewpoints because I really believe that if we're looking at that shared humanity, that we can find solutions to complex problems by working together and actively looking for information that might be different through a different lens. So that is definitely part of my professional training and something that I practice every day when I see patients across this district. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Melissa. And Nadia, the same question to you. How do you plan to engage people with opinions different than your own and seek to create common ground and teamwork?
Well, as you know, Senate District 16 is diverse in terms of our experiences and our ideas, and you can't make assumptions that anyone's going to agree with you on one thing. And I know that well from my work on the Clatsop County Planning Commission. Even those people that maybe politically are aligned with me, we differ a lot of times. And so we have to figure out a way to move forward. And I say often, I feel like we have more in common than difference, and it's more productive to focus on those things that we have in common, especially when you have a short timeline. So as your state senator, going straight into a February 1st short session, you can't waste any time. And so I think, you know, for me, if I was going to be appointed into this position, I would move forward as quickly as possible, convening the county commissioners and other community leaders to figure out what we do have in common and what some of those solutions that we agree upon are, and move those forward and try to work on the more difficult questions later in the year when we have a little breathing room to explore them. You know, I bring it back to my own experience in my neighborhood where, you know, we may have a lot of different approaches to the world, but in the end, when a tree falls in my street, we have to work together to get it off the street so that we can get out. And so we have to somehow figure out how to get along in the face of these differences. And I look forward to tough conversations and smart policymaking in the year forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Nadia. And that concludes the questions from Clatsop County, and I want to thank all the nominees for your willingness to engage in the process. Good luck.
Thank you, Commissioner Quill. Columbia County is next. J.C. has told me that the buzzer does go off, a beep goes off. I didn't hear it, but I may have been talking over it, which is something I tend to do. Columbia County is next, and Chair Hymular is going to take the helm here and ask questions. He is also, unless somebody in the legal field says that this is not appropriate, he's going to start in the opposite direction because if he doesn't, then there is no diversity in the answers perhaps. So Chair Hymular, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll ask a question, and then Commissioner Garrett will come in and can do the same. I just want to say thank you to the three candidates. We're very pleased that you've thrown your hat in the ring, and this is not a taken lightly, I'm sure, by any of you all any more than it is by us. So thank you for allowing us to go through this process with you. My question has to do with a very Columbia County-specific issue, and I'll ask the same question of the three of you, starting with Nadia. Knowing the limited availability of deep-water ports along the Columbia River that have access to rail and highway, what are your thoughts about the potential rezoning of 800 acres of Port of Columbia County property from PA 80 to RIPD?
Thank you, Chair Hymular. Yes, I am on the most basic level familiar with that project in that I worked in Columbia County in a previous position. I haven't been back there, though, working for five years now, so I haven't been following that project closely. But I will say, you know, economic development and especially family wage job development in our counties are extremely important, and we have to figure out ways to provide those jobs to our people so that they can support their families. You know, a lot of the jobs that have proliferated, especially on the North Coast, are, you know, retail jobs and things like that that are not union, that don't necessarily have benefits. And so, you know, we have to figure out how we can provide those kinds of better-paying, high-benefit jobs to our community members. And then, and when we're doing that, we have to balance that against, you know, the interests and needs of our communities. And so I look forward to learning more about that project and understanding how your community feels about it and so that we can see, you know, if there's anything that I could do as your interim state senator to support job development in all of our counties, including Columbia. Thank you.
And thank you. We'll go to Melissa Bush next. And Melissa, I'm going to ask you the same question. Knowing the limited availability of deep-water ports on the Columbia River that have access to both rail and highway, what are your thoughts about the potential rezoning of 800 acres of Port of Columbia County property from PA 80 to RIPD?
Thank you, Chair Hymular. My understanding is that this product is underway currently in terms of the rezoning process, and it is also my understanding that that decision is primarily made at the county level, not at the legislative level. So I would defer to the county commissioners in terms of the scope of the work that you all do and would not want to step outside of the scope of the Senate seat if appointed. That said, I do deeply care about the need to invest in our communities for jobs. I think that having fair-paying, family-wage jobs with good benefits and assuring that we are making the basic needs of our communities met is critical. I'm a union member, and I strongly support the need to bring other good union jobs to our community. I also have heard great concern from community members about potential environmental impacts, and so I don't want to dismiss those concerns. I am not an expert in environmental science, and I am not an expert in fossil fuels. So I would, again, be looking for the input of people who are experts in both of those fields if I was asked to weigh in on this particular issue. However, again, it is my understanding that this is primarily a decision in terms of rezoning that will be decided at the county level. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. And finally, Rachel. Same question for you. Knowing the limited availability of deep water ports along the Columbia River that have access to both rail and highway, what are your thoughts about the potential rezoning of 800 acres of Port of Columbia County property from P A eighty to R I P D?
Thank you, Commissioner. You know, Columbia County, the place I'm, I'm so proud to call home, offers so much possibility for economic growth over the long run. And I think we also have to acknowledge the fact that we live in a global economy and the, the fact that we all in each of our counties have a unique opportunity to participate in a global economy is really important and I think something to be proud of. I also think that the port offers exciting possibilities for living wage jobs. And I hope that, my hope would be as we continue to develop the port, that we think of jobs and infrastructure that not only will bring prosperity now, but can also bring prosperity long into the future. I also would defer to the county commissioners on this a hundred percent. And I know that there are many stakeholders who certainly don't all agree with each other, who are involved in this process. And my hope would be that each of them has a voice, each of them feels heard. And each of them has an opportunity to hear their concerns addressed. But, you know, at the end of the day, I, I think there's a win here and I, I think we can find it.
Thank you, Rachel. And at this time, I'll yield to Commissioner Garrett.
All right. I think I have a maybe slightly different questions for each of you, but one question each. Nadia, I'll start with you. Many would say that Oregon land use law and environmental policy hinder our ability to grow the economy and to build affordably. Do you agree or disagree with that notion? And do you have any specific policy ideas on how we can improve Oregon land use law and environmental policy to make it more affordable to build and more appealing for industry growth of all sorts, not just tourism?
Thank you, Commissioner Garrett. Great question. And I've been having some really interesting conversations with both the commissioners and our planning commission on this very issue. Affordable workforce housing is the top issue in all, in all of our counties right now. And we have to figure out how, and of course, workforce, also family wage jobs. And you had mentioned industry as well. And I'll just say, you know, Oregon has nineteen goals. And right now we're doing comprehensive planning in Clatso County. I'm very familiar with them. I understand the constraints that we're working under. And I will say absolutely, those goals do restrain where we can place both housing and, and industry. And, but there are also very good reasons for a lot of those goals, including protecting our working lands. So agriculture and forestry lands in particular, and also focusing development in and around our cities where we have infrastructure that can support people. And I think, I think, you know, we have this, this, you know, difficult, but interesting process where you can, can you do exceptions to developing land outside of city centers, outside of U G Bs? And if you look at the comprehensive plans and ordinances in each of your counties, you'll see a huge list of properties that are in those exception areas. And so I think that's our low hanging fruit in terms of, of finding areas, you know, maybe just outside of our cities or along transportation corridors, we'll be able to add both housing and industry in the long term. And we'll have to work really closely with D L C D and other Oregon agencies. But we'll also have to just keep our eyes on opportunities in the legislature. How can we make sure that we can protect our working lands, but also meet the needs of both industry and housing in the long term? And I'm really looking forward to exploring that. That's something that I love, love learning about and have some experience, but can always learn more. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next question for Melissa. Melissa, timber unity's popped up in some of your guys' interviews that I've heard. And there, there is a strong presence of timber unity supporters out here in Columbia County. Many of us know, I'm not sure if everybody knows, but Timber Unity considers themselves a nonpartisan special interest group that does have a history of supporting both Republican and Democrat candidates. I personally know of Republicans and Democrats yeah, that are very supportive of Timber Unity. But I have also heard you publicly say that you know for a fact that Timber Unity will fight hard against you in your campaign to run for this senate seat. I'm curious why, why that is. Why do you believe that that has a history of endorsing both Republican and Democrat candidates will not support you and will work hard against you to get, to be elected in the next campaign cycle?
Thank you, Commissioner. I am not affiliated with Timber Unity. What I am able to say about this particular question is that I believe that I will not be receiving any support from any special interest group across this state. And I am not planning to take money from out of state special interests, which is a great portion of Timber Unity's funding. So I have seen, yes, that Timber Unity does in, on occasion endorse and support candidates across both the political parties of the Democrats and Republicans and, and in between. I am not sure that some of my personal politics would align with Timber Unity. I am happy, more than happy to hear and have conversations with Timber Unity leadership. Because again, I think it's very important to hear from people who might have different perspectives. That said, my concern is not with Timber Unity as an interest group. My concern is the constituents of this district. So if there are individual members that identify as supporters of Timber Unity, those are my constituents. Those are the people who I want to hear from. Those are the folks that I am here to help solve problems for. Those are the people that I would be beholden to as, as a legislator if elected and if appointed. So those are really the voices that I would like to hear from far beyond any particular leadership that may have interests that quite frankly, may not be the interests of our state.
Thank you. Rachel. So Columbia County has a long history of voting, voting Democrat over the last hundred years has primarily supported Democrat candidates. Now, over the last two election cycles, that has shifted quite drastically and has the Columbia County voters have, the majority of those voters have actually supported Republican candidates across the board over this, this actual last election. I've heard you explain that you likely would not run for this seat in the next election cycle. But I've also heard that you have, you've heard you say that you will support whoever the Democrat candidate is. Columbia County is, has about, about just as many Republicans as Democrats registered and even more non-affiliated voters. I guess my concern there is, how can you say at this moment in time, when we don't actually know who all of the candidates will be, that your support will just go towards the Democrat candidate? And do you feel like that's a good way to represent our entire population that's, that's pretty well divided in that way? Can you respond to that for me?
That's a great question. Thank you for asking. I think that more than being a red or blue county, this is a county of proud, working class folks who want to be represented by their legislator in Salem. And I think that particularly lately, all too often, legislators in Salem are making choices that work really, really well for larger, more populated areas and they leave rural areas out. And I think folks feel that. I think they feel left behind. We're also moving, our, our economy is shifting. We're moving away from our, our current economy of, of, of manufacturing and the things of the seventies and the eighties that, that brought us a lot of prosperity to a, a new economy that happens online and we're shifting to and dealing with demands of climate change and a lot of different challenges, right? And so I think people in this community want to be brought along. For me, you know, it's no secret that I'm, I'm a Democrat. And so my values lie within the Democratic Party and the things I believe in. But I also think that sometimes the Democrats really don't go far enough. I, to that end, I know that Melissa is running and I, I don't know who else is going to hop in the race as far as the Democrats are concerned. But I really think she's somebody who is capable of understanding and does understand the difference between what our communities need versus what other communities and other parts of the state need. I think she will listen. And I think she will hear every point of view and do a great job. So that's why, that's why I support her and I myself will certainly not be running.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. We now move on to Multnomah County. Commissioner Myron, are you driving the bus here?
No, I'm, I'm driving the bus. This is Deborah Cefory, the Multnomah County Chair and
See you up there.
I'm hiding out in the corner. We will be asking two questions from Multnomah County. I will be asking the first one and then Commissioner Myron will also be asking a question as the part, there is a small part, as we know, of Senate District sixteen that is in Multnomah County and that is represented by Commissioner Myron from District one. So I will start with the first question. And this is the same question for all three candidates. I think I will shake things up a bit as the last speaker did and start with Nadia. My question to all three is home, about homelessness. Homelessness is not just a metro area issue. Each county, all six of us participating in this meeting are working at the county level to house everyone who is living on our streets or in our living without shelter. But we can't do it without the state's help. How will you work at the state level to address homelessness while at the same time balancing the different needs for each of our counties?
Thank you, Chair Cefory. I really appreciate that question. Homelessness, houselessness is a big important issue for me personally. As you said, we have houseless communities throughout the district. I was just noting they have a very large one in Seaside, right behind Les Schwab on City Parkland. And then, you know, in Warranton and Astoria and, and all points in between. And though we've had homelessness issues over the years, kids living in cars. And the worst of it, it's certainly been exacerbated the last two years. And so on the state level, number one, we have to keep people that are in their homes now in their homes, right? So I know right now, a big, big thing that's happening in the legislature is around renter, you know, reducing the amount of evictions and also making sure that landlords are whole. So let's, let's keep supporting that effort. And it sounds like that, that that application process is opening up again in the end of this month. Let's get that, that money out the door, get a new money and get those people the support that they need so that they can stay on their feet, stay in their housing until they're, they're up and working again and able to take care of themselves in a, in a more positive way. Of course, providing affordable housing is in that same vein. But in terms of the homeless people currently, you know, I think we need to provide funding for especially day drop-in centers, warming centers, transitional housing services around behavioral health and addiction, substance abuse. A lot of our shelters do not allow you know, substance, substance uses, which is a, a high barrier for many of these people. We have to, and then we have to really work on developing transitional housing with the support, you know, integrated into it so that people can get into their permanent housing situation. And I think there's a stereotype of a, of a homeless person being a, you know, a, a white veteran on the streets. But the reality is it's all different kinds of people and we have to give them help now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Melissa?
Thank you, Chair Cefory. If appointed, my understanding during the short session is there will not be a tremendous amount of funding work happening around housing in that, that thirty-five day session. That said, I know there's some ongoing work around housing policy that's currently in motion in work groups and that will be looking towards the twenty twenty-three session. In terms of just the bigger picture, I would be looking for solutions to address housing both for stable and affordable housing for everyone, for folks that are impacted by houselessness as well as mental illness, substance use and for working families and folks on fixed incomes, which is a tremendous portion of our community as well. As a nurse, I see these impacts every day. The inadequate housing in our communities really not only lands folks you know, on the streets, but living in cars and living on boats sometimes along Savvy Island. There's just a tremendous amount of, of impact across the district. What I would really be trying to do in terms of policy specifics is looking at these sort of intersectional opportunities to address this issue. I think that we can't separate housing from jobs that we need affordable housing and we also need stable jobs. Good, fair paying jobs that allow people to stay in that housing. I think that we need to be looking at opportunities to supplement and/or, you know, uplift folks that are looking to purchase homes for the first time as well through assistance and down payments. I know that's something that is currently being talked about in the legislature as well as, as rent subsidies for folks that if we are creating more housing, we need to find ways to get people into that housing immediately and to keep them there. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Rachel?
Thank you, Chair Cefory. I think when we're talking about housing and homelessness, I think it's important first to recognize what a complicated issue this is. And any solution is really more of a bouquet of, of different things that address different aspects of the problem. It's very complicated and I commend all of our county commissioners who work really hard constantly over the course of years to address this problem. It's not an easy one. I think there are three things right now that we're really focused on. One, in the legislature. I think it's really important that we're keeping people in, in their homes at this moment. So addressing rental assistance and, and keeping people in place. Very, very important, absolutely something that I will support and make sure goes through and gets to the counties and ultimately gets into the hands of the people and the renters who need them. Second, over the long term, I think we really need in this district to be working with D L C D and getting a little bit more creative about our, our land use. I think there are really big problems. I, I don't think it's helpful. And I think the stories that I have heard about what people are struggling with when it comes to housing affordability, particularly on the coast are, are awful. We need solutions and building more housing on the coast and in Columbia County is a really important piece of that, that we absolutely have to address. And third, we do have a lot of federal money coming in. It'll come into the state and you need somebody in the legislature who's making sure that it's also coming into the district. So making sure that we're dealing with agency red tape so that those dollars can, can get here. I, I think that that is also very important.
Thanks, Rachel. And Sharon Myron, the commissioner from District one, will be asked in the next question.
Thank you. I am really appreci- appreciate all of you here today. And this is quite an array of commissioners. So my question is around behavioral health. And in the last legislative session, the Oregon Legislature made And in the last legislative session, the Oregon Legislature made some significant investments in behavioral health and those included investments in residential treatment facilities, workforce incentives and systems innovation. Much of that investment is still at the state and has not been released yet. What will you do to advocate for release of that money that has already been dedicated to local communities and counties so that we can start to actually do the work to address our behavioral health needs? And let's start with Melissa.
Thank you, Commissioner Myron. I am certainly so deeply concerned about the state of our behavioral health services in the state. I think it is, you know, a travesty and certainly directly related to so many of the other issues that we're talking about here. I think that if the funds have been allocated and there is already, if the policy is passed and the, the funds have been allocated, then I would be looking to advocate directly to the agencies that are in charge of making sure that that money is being dispersed to the counties immediately. There's no time like the present to get to work on these problems. And so I think that it just takes a, a really strong advocate to drive home that this is not something that can wait any longer. We need solutions now and those solutions require money and the counties need it immediately. I know that in Columbia County, we have one agency essentially that provides all of the behavioral health services across the county and I work with that agency directly. And I hear from the caseworkers that they are exhausted. They do not have the staff. They do not have the resources and that impacts them as the workers, you know, seeing these vulnerable clients across our, our, this area of the district. It also, of course, impacts the people that need the services and it results in, you know, inadequate care for those folks. So I would definitely be, you know, barking up that tree and knocking on any door of anyone who will listen to me to make sure that we can get those funds dispersed right away. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Melissa. Rachel, how about you?
Thank you. You know, I, I think my simple answer would really just be to get on the phone. You know, behavioral health is an incredibly important service that our communities really need and especially now in the middle of a pandemic. And so for me, the simple answer would be to, to pick up on the phone and, and stay on the phone until our communities get, get what they need and, and to identify that holdup quickly. I also, not knowing a whole lot about this issue, it sounds like there's a lot of really unnecessary red tape that's exhausting folks who are on the ground. And so identifying how we can address that red, red tape and make it a little bit more, things a little bit more streamlined and straightforward would be a very high priority for me.
Thank you. And Nadia?
Thank you, Commissioner Myron. I'm so glad that Melissa Bush went first on this one because of the three of us. She's definitely more of an expert than I am. But I will say that I had a, an aunt, Karen, who I grew up with that was schizophrenic and died too early at 65. But I have a lot of personal experience of a family having to support someone who always needed support in so many different ways. And I'm so thankful for all the services that she was given by the city of Portland and, and all the wraparound services that, that were able to support, not just her, but my whole family. And so I'm thankful that, of that. And so I bring that passion with me to learn more about this really important issue. I'll also just say, I have experience with Oregon agencies and red tape. And I think sometimes, you know, in their, in their interest of protecting the state and protecting the funds that they bring in, they get in the way of good work. And so you sometimes have to, it, it is really about personal relationships, I think. Sometimes you have, you know, particular personalities that are like that, but also entire cultures of agencies. And so, you know, I think I would strive to try to better understand, like, what is it about these people holding their purse strings that's not allowing them to let it go? And is there anything I could do as a count, as a, a state senator to help loosen those up? And I'd certainly rely on all of you also to try to help emphasize from the local level up the importance it is and tell these stories. Cause I think the storytelling is often what, what resonates with people, not the statistics. And so I thank you for all your work in this really important issue.
Thank you all so much. And those are our questions.
Thank you, Chair Cefory and Commissioner Myron. We will now move to Tillamook County. Commissioner Yamamoto, are you the questioner?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Thank you. I am Tillamook County Commissioner Dave Yamamoto, current Chair of the Tillamook County Board of Commissioners. And Tillamook County's first question will be asked by Commissioner Erin Scar. And our Tillamook County second question will be asked by Commissioner Mary Faith Bell.
Into a very intense, very rapid process. And I just appreciate the, the time you have already spent and the time that you will be committing should you be selected to be our Senator for the coming year. So I just really appreciate that. So I will, actually, I'm actually going to ask both questions. Commissioner Bell has decided that she will go ahead and defer on that. So I'll start with the first question. Former Senator Betsy Johnson enjoys broad bipartisan support in Tillamook County. Indeed, she is respected and beloved for her centrist representation of rural communities and businesses. What values do you share with Betsy Johnson? And how would you lead from those values to represent us? And I will start with Melissa, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Scar. I would say that I, this is an excellent question for me because what I often say when people ask me, you know, about how would I vote or what policy would I support? And if it's around something that I maybe am not an expert in, my answer is always that I'll vote my values. I, I have a strong set of values with working people, working families and all of the people across this district. And so that is where I will always go when it comes to making decisions if, if appointed and if elected in, down the road. That said, you know, I, I understand that Senator Johnson gave many, many, many years of service and has built incredible relationships across this district and advocated very strongly for the needs of the community. And I think that's critical. I'm not sure that it's critical that her and my values are exactly the same, but I do think that it is important that, that we know that the job is to show up for this community and advocate for the needs of the community regardless of particular politics of an individual. And that is what I would intend to do. So, you know, in terms of how, how I would model that, I will fight for working families. I will fight for the essential needs of the communities that I know are the things that impact people's health and wellbeing and the economic prosperity across this district. I will fight for basic human dignity for all of our citizens because I think that is critical. So that's what I would bring if appointed. I am fierce. I am courageous. I am smart. I am willing to stand up even in the face of folks that don't agree with me. And, and I think that is a shared value. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Rachel, could you answer the same question for us, please?
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I think the first thing I have to say there is that, that question is a little bit like comparing a, a college ballplayer to Michael Jordan. Big shoes to fill, big shoes. But what I have learned in talking with all of you about Senator Betsy Johnson is that she was, one, absolutely a straight shooter. She is somebody who was honest and she spoke her mind and she asked the hard questions. And that's something that you can count on from me, absolutely. And I think she really has a reputation district-wide of treating people with respect and treating people like the experts they are, even if we all disagree. We all are here doing, doing the work in good faith. And I think she understood that in a way that I also will. And finally, and I think most importantly, the stories that I have heard about the ways that Senator Johnson individually picked up the phone and addressed constituent casework with, with folks over the years is absolutely incredible. I have never met a, a state legislator with that kind of dedication to connecting people with their government. And I have to be perfectly honest, again, I don't know that any of us could ever be that good. But, you know, that is where I would focus my energy the most on, on trying to emulate her, absolutely.
Thank you, Rachel. I appreciate that. And Nadia, same question to you.
I think a lot of Senator Johnson's great characteristics and values have already been discussed. But I'll, the ones that I wrote down, I'll, well, I'll start with this one. You know, where I saw her the most were fundraisers, right? She was always at every important fundraiser and often was the emcee. And she was raising monies particularly for our social services. She was in it and she was really dedicated to making sure that our community all, you know, when they had the ability, that they all pitched in to support social services. And that's something that I definitely would, would work for as well, is actually just really showing up and showing the support in, in the most physical way as COVID makes it more possible over time. And I'll also, second what Rachel said, in that, in communication. So when I started my political work and, you know, advocacy, advocacy work as it's, as a citizen of Clatsop County, I called her, I sent her emails and she always called me back. It was amazing. And, and I think that is really, really important in rural communities like ours, having that real personal communication. That being said, it's 2022 and I really admire all the different tools that are available out there to share information and to gather information from our constituency. And so I look forward to emulating, for example, Representative Witt and Senator Gomburg's great e-newsletters that they send out every, more than every month, I think. And other people have done Facebook events. And it's really, really important to have town halls, I think. And so I think that, that I would try to, you know, take her dedication to communication and bring it into the, into 2022 so that we can even do a better job to reach more people. Surveys are another great tool, online tool. But yeah, so I'd say that. And then again, she's, you know, she is a straight shooter. She's very strong. And I think Melissa, Rachel and I both all follow in her footsteps in that, in that regard as well. Thank you.
Thank you all for those, those answers. I will go ahead and ask the next question as well. So we are on very limited time as we approach this short session. And as I understand correctly, much of what will be considered will be introduced before you are seated and able to introduce things. But with your limited time and influence, what is the one, what are the one or two topic areas where you will, will you use the majority of your time and influence as available in this short session?
Good question.
And let's go in that same order. We'll start with Melissa.
Thank you. Yes, I have not heard the official short session agenda yet. I think those things were being discussed over the last three days during legislative days in terms of really outlining what the particular policies that will be carried forward in the session. That said, I would use my expertise in healthcare. And I say that also knowing that I understand healthcare is more than just about whether people are, have the ability to see a doctor or have a nurse like me visit them. There is a overarching issue that incorporates everything from housing to education to childcare. And I know that I can use the knowledge that I have of working on the ground with the families in our communities and the input from other leaders across this district to guide my focus. But I would be bringing that, that skillset, that knowledgeset to any policy and really looking at, you know, how we can better improve the daily lives of the people that live in our district and better meet the essential needs of the people that are living in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Same question, Rachel?
Thank you. So first of all, you know, I think because I've worked in the legislature before, I will be able to hit the ground running in a couple of ways. The, the short session, what, what a lot of folks don't realize, I'm sure many of you do, is that things happen very fast. In a long session, folks have weeks and weeks to get up to speed. And in a short session, bills live and die in the first two weeks. And we're just now hearing, because of legislative days this week, we're just hearing now about what some of those are. But for the last couple of weeks, I've had the pleasure of speaking with several state legislators about what their priorities are coming up, just to get a feel for what some of the major trends and themes are that we need to be focused on and paying attention to. So were I to be appointed, I would already be going into the legislature with that knowledge of how those systems work and be able to watch out for any sort of legislation that might be particularly beneficial or particularly problematic. I also, one of our legislators that I've of course spoken to is Representative Brad Witt. He has some interesting ideas coming up and I also hope to, I also hope to collaborate with Representative Weber. As far as the issues are concerned, I would be a very strong advocate for any piece of legislation that makes it easier to build more affordable housing in this district. I think that's absolutely priority number one. I'm hearing really exciting news about bills concerning mental health in our schools. And I also think that if it is ready, I am really looking forward to helping the Timber Accord go through and making sure that the people who've been at the table this whole time are the people who are at the table when it goes through the legislature. And if that happens in the short session, I'm, I'm right there. I also want to make sure that-
Rachel, I think it's time. Thank you very much. Same question to you, Nadia.
Yeah, as noted, the legislative agenda is just under development now and we're glued to the, glued to the news to try to adhere into the legislative webpage to try to understand what legislative concepts are coming out right now. One thing that I'm pretty excited about is, is this workforce development proposal that is, that is, that is shaping up here that is supported by our governor, but is also supported by much of, of the legislature as well. And why I like that is because it's really important to get our people back to work. You know, we've, we've had a lot of people pull out of the workforce for a variety of reasons over the last two years. So I'm hoping that, you know, number one, that childcare will be part of that workforce legislative agenda so that especially the women of families can get back to work. I know I've really struggled myself under that scenario before my son started kindergarten, thank goodness. And, and then also I'm a big supporter of our community colleges and our small business development centers. And, you know, we have a great one here in Seaside and Astoria. And I understand one is under development in Columbia County as well and in other counties. And so Tillamook Bay Community College, Clatsop Community College, the Portland Community Colleges, the Oregon Manufacturing Innovation Center, these are all amazing opportunities for our communities to get our workers trained for well-paying jobs. And so I think we need to, we need to bring the money to be able to provide those programs to our people so they can, can do the work. And if, there's one thing that we're good at in our counties, it's building stuff and, and manufacturing. And so I, I can see that. And we have a real building shortage actually also because there's so much building happening and a shortage of construction workers. So let's figure out how we can get funding to those really important programs so we can support our communities through well-paid work. Thank you.
Thank you, Nadia. Chair McGruder, I return it to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scar. It's been great questions. This is very enlightening, really enjoying it. So Chair Harrington, Washington County is next. And you and Vice Chair Willie are the questioners. You're on. Welcome.
Yes. Thank you. And I want to first thank the three folks who have participated in, as applicants in this nomination process and to all the precinct committee chairpersons who participated in the nomination process. I really do respect the, the process as I understand it to work. So yes, I'll ask- So yes, I'll ask one question and Vice Chair Willie will ask another one. And a good portion of Senate District 16 is in my area on the at-large elected chair for the whole county and he for District 4. So District 16 covers a very large geographic area, representationally by the fact that there are six county commissions participating today. Here in Washington County, 82% of our land area is rural. So as much as many of my county commission colleagues across the state think of us as an urban county, 82% of our district of our county is rural. And nine sure, 95% of our population lives in that 18% of the urban acreage. So we feel sensitivity, as much sensitivity about our countywide resources as all the other counties in Oregon too. So to my question, oh, and order wise, I'm going to mix it up and go Nadia Gardner, Rachel Armitage, and Melissa Bush in that order. So is that with that context, here we go. Counties are often required to take on functions and services that would be provided by the state to our shared constituencies. However, once the responsibilities are passed on to counties, funding rarely keeps up with the costs to provide the service, either by being held at the same level year over year or by seeing reduction in funding from the state. How will you work with your counties to address the underfunding in the area of law libraries which serve all county residents or community corrections, which also serves all county residents? For example, or reinvestment such as providing funding to support programs like gain share? So first to you, Ms. Gardner.
Wow, okay. So I was looking at the legislative agendas of some of the counties. Washington County was one, very ambitious agenda as well as Clatsop County. And then looking at the Association of Oregon Counties as well as the cities to understand like, what are the priorities? What are the shared priorities? That was what I was really looking for. And so, you know, one thing that's like, it should really just be at the bold, bold top is is no unfunded mandates, right? So it's like no unfunded mandates, fair reimbursement, consistent long-term reimbursement. It's not it going away in the short term in, you know, after the short term. And so I think, you know, I think sometimes things that happen on the state level, they don't, they don't really recognize that. And especially in the more rural areas, they don't understand, you know, what seems like maybe to especially people in the Portland area as a small amount of money is quite a lot of money in some of our rural communities. And so, you know, I think I would go into the legislature with that in mind. Like, how do we make sure that, you know, maybe we're passing good bills that with that are well-intended, but we make sure that there's some really equity around our rural areas? You know, I I think, you know, there's a lot of talk around the rural urban divide. And I think sometimes it's overstated. But but I think in this case, like, I think it's just sometimes it's it's hard for people in urban areas to understand what it's really like for those of us who live in these communities that that don't have the same support structure. I was looking at the budgets for Clatsop County and Tillamook County last night, late into the night on stuff to just understand like, where does the money actually come from, you know? And it's it's, you know, it's pretty precarious. And so we have to be, you know, as a as a state, we have to be supportive of of our rural communities, not oppressive. So I would go in, I think, with that, with that in mind. I don't have specific ideas about law libraries or even corrections. But but I, you know, look forward to learning more. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Armitage.
Thank you. One thing I would say is that our rural counties especially, this is a frustrating problem for everybody. And it really makes me a little upset even just hearing about it. But our rural counties in particular don't even have the same levers to raise additional revenue the way that our more urban counties do. Pound on each other in a way that that is that can be really upsetting. The second thing is that this is certainly not a problem, a problem that gets fixed in a year. But we certainly can try. And these are the solutions that I think would make a good, great start. So first of all, when you, the counties have creative ideas to that ultimately save the state money, as I have heard of in my one-on-one meetings with you, I think we should prioritize and support those projects and and make them happen. That that's the first thing. I think the second thing is that making sure that any new tax proposals, and I I hope in the short session there aren't any, but we're there to be. I think it's really important that that those proposals bring revenue directly to the counties and not not just always the state. I think that's that's really critical. I think that cutting red tape is really key as we have talked about multiple commissioners have asked questions around how do we make sure that the state gives us the funding we need, that it's already promised? So that that I think is at the top of the list for sure. And finally, preventing new preventing new mandates. We don't, we don't need more of this legislation going through the short session. And we need somebody who's there who can be looking out for that and who will listen to you and and make sure that we're not struggling with new mandates moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Bush.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I think budgets are moral documents. And if we are, if we care about rural communities, then we need to fund our rural communities. Bottom line, I think that if we are passing legislation, that we need to make sure that that legislation takes into consideration the limitations in our rural communities and that there is more limited resources across the board to meet some of the those those mandates that might have very good intention, but sometimes at the county level are very difficult to actually put into motion. So I think that where legislation comes forward, that dollars need to be attached to it in order to make sure that those needs can actually be met at the county level. I can say kind of on the side of the corrections thing, the the corrections portion of your question, somewhat related, I heard recently from here in our county. And I know some, this is something that is impacting all of the counties in this room and across the state, that recently there was a certain amount of money, I believe it was $6 million allocated to the Oregon Public Defense Department that is now being not reimbursed to counties because essentially a red tape. And it's an oversight and one that really should be easily fixed because that money has already been allocated. It it needs to be reimbursed to the counties so that the counties can do the work of public defense and that the district attorneys can do the work of prosecuting cases. But that shouldn't be on the backs of the county's budget. So that's just an example, I think. But again, speaks to the the specific point that if if elected, if appointed, it would be my my deep dedication to make sure that if we're putting forward policies that we're really making sure that they're actually doable in our district.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Jerry Willie.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you again for the three participants here today. You know, just to follow up a little bit with the chair's question, we value home rule and certainly our ability to provide services and to work with the state on a on an equal funding opportunity, just like what I think has just been said. Taking into consideration that the three of you are going to begin your service in a short session where you're literally going to be inundated with not only requests but ideas and things like that. We have talked about workforce development. We've talked about economic development, mental health, homelessness, public safety, childcare, and the list continues. I'd just like to hear what your top two priorities that you would hope to participate and work with other legislators to accomplish in this short session. And we can start with, I guess I have to tell what I want to start with here. We're going to go with Melissa, then Rachel and Nadia.
Thank you. I I think that I somewhat answered this question in a previous response. I would, I would be looking at healthcare as a number one priority for me to be working towards because it's the thing that I know the very most about. That said, I also think that healthcare has its hand in just about all of the other things that you mentioned. And so I think that that skill set, that knowledge set that I have makes it very easy for me to be looking critically at the other policies that are being put forward in the short session. And I would be able to navigate those to really be making sure that we're making decisions for our district based on the health and wellbeing of our communities. I also know that as a junior legislator coming in in a 35-day short session, that this is not going to be the time for me to be bringing my own bold new ideas to the table. That's just not, that's not the way short session works. So I will be wanting to collaborate and work with the bills that are already in motion to be really having an eye on what's going to be most beneficial to our district and to be learning and listening and collaborating to get work done. Thank you.
Is that me next? Okay, sorry, lost track. Well, I think we've spoken quite a bit already about affordable housing and homelessness. And that has to be my top, my top priority, I think, going into the the short session. And then throughout the year, also with the legislative days and committee work. You know, we have to get moving on that. I think we've dragged our feet too long. You know, our counties and cities have had housing studies and and then now struggle with actually implementing them. And so getting support to them around homeless services as well as as affordable housing has to be top, top priority. And since we haven't talked about it before, my second one will have to be COVID because we've got to get out of this mess in order to get back on our feet again. We have to keep our kids in school, please, please. And we've got to keep our people working, which is connected to that. We have, of course, you know, 850,000 deaths so far in the United States. But even in our rural areas, I was calculating it up. And we have 154 people who have died in Columbia, Tillamook, and Clatsop Counties so far. And that's 150 families that are devastated. We can't have that continue to happen. So what we need to do is make our public facilities well-funded to be able to do the best job they can do to try to prevent future deaths. And that means getting more boosters in arms. I think, you know, a lot of people who are vaccinated, we actually have great vaccination rates in our counties. A 68 to 72% over 18 are vaccinated at this point. But like half of them or less than half are boosted. And we've got to make sure that those people are boosted. We also have pretty low rates for people under 18. And so I think we have a lot of opportunity there and continue to support just safe behaviors, whether it be in school or in the workplace or while we're shopping at Safeway. Those are things that can get us a long way closer to an endemic situation rather than a pandemic and will help our economy be stronger in the long term. Thanks.
So for me, I would say priority number one, any bill that makes it easier to build affordable workforce housing in the district is my top priority, far and away. I think my second priority would be making sure that federal dollars, particularly for pandemic relief, but also infrastructure are making their way to this district. And third, I would say less of a policy and more of a lens, but making sure that we're watching out again for great bills for this district and bills that would really have unintended consequences, perhaps unfunded mandates, and making sure that those bills are successful or that they are unsuccessful, depending on the impact that they would have on our on our constituents.
Great. Thank you, Chair Harrington and Vice Chair Willie and participants. Our next questioners are from Yamhill County. And I see we have Chair Bruce Schauer and are you Vice Chair Casey, Vice Chair Kula? All right.
I am Vice Chair Kula. I'm so excited.
Good morning, everybody. And Commissioner Kula, I don't know if you've prepared questions, but if you have, maybe I'll just ask the first one and you can ask the second. But if not, I have to.
That sounds great, Chair.
Did you have one?
Yes, I have a, I have a question and I'll ask it after yours. And it's, don't, candidates, don't worry. It's not terrible.
Okay, sounds good. Good morning, Commissioners and Rachel, Melissa, and Nadia. Thank you for being here and thank you for being willing to serve. I do want to correct a statement that I heard earlier. It was regarding timber unity. And as you know, your district is very heavily involved in timber unity in terms of your residents. I served on the Timber Unity Board for a couple of years. And I can tell you that I've never seen a group become so influential in Oregon politics so quickly. And collectively over the past three years, they've probably raised about $300,000. And most of that was in-state money with everyday folks buying bumper stickers and sweatshirts and T-shirts. And and the comment was that most of their money was from out of state, which is just patently false. So I want to make sure I correct that statement. And my question is regarding Medicaid. In the past, the legislature has been focused on expanding Medicaid. In order to pay for that, they passed sales taxes on private insurance plans and companies. The result has been higher healthcare costs for many Oregonians and increasing burdens on our small businesses. In fact, after Measure 101 passed, many small businesses simply couldn't afford to provide healthcare plans for their employees anymore. We are approaching about 1.4 million Oregonians that are on Medicaid now. And the cost of this will be a budget buster in future biennium. As counties, we also feel those impacts. So how do you plan to tackle the rising costs of Medicaid? And would you support higher taxes on private insurance plans to pay for it? And Melissa, since you're a nurse, we will start with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I believe that healthcare is a human right. I think it is critical that we assure that every Oregonian and every single individual in this district has access to healthcare. I will always stand by the need to assure that every single individual will not go without the care that they need, no matter their financial circumstances, no matter their background, no matter whether they live in a rural community or an urban community. That said, I think that Medicaid has a lot of work it needs to that needs to be done. And I think that that's not just in terms of the particular area of providing access to care in the way that we're talking about it here in your question, but also in terms of accessing care for our most vulnerable citizens, our elderly folks that depend on Medicaid for long-term care needs. That is a system that needs a lot of work. I will always, though, stand by the need for Medicaid. And I would never cut the the ability to folks, for folks to access Medicaid because I think, again, healthcare is a human right. And and as a nurse, as a person that works with our most vulnerable community members, many of whom do live in our more rural parts of this district, I know first firsthand how essential it is that people have access to Medicaid. And I know what happens when they don't. So I will, I will stand by that no matter what. I am happy always to work on budgetary issues. I think that we always need more revenue sources. I don't think those revenue sources should fall on the backs of small businesses. I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to continue to look at at tax policy and find ways to make more stable revenue for the state to fund these things. However, I would never cut access to healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nadia. We'll go to you now. Nadia, we'll go to you next.
Thank you. I also believe that healthcare is a human right and not just physical body healthcare, but dental and behavioral care as well. And wrapping those three together as one unit is, is important to me. I don't, I've never understood why they've been separate because one influences the other. And there's many people who are very vulnerable in our district and throughout the state that have many health issues. I know many people who are on the Oregon Health Plan here on the North Coast. And I know that they really value their, their medical and dental care that they get through those programs. And I think it's, it's critical that not only we maintain that program, but we improve that program over time so that it takes care of our elders and our children and our most vulnerable families throughout the district. I'm not the expert on how it is funded, however, and, and I really, I value your input. I, I'm really interested in learning more and let's figure out, I think sometimes, you know, I think as, as a scientist, I always look for the thing that's going to, you know, that's proven to work in terms of funding, but I know that sometimes that's not politically feasible. And so you just look for the thing that's the most feasible that, that can get through lobbyists. And I, you know, I, I struggle with that. I think, you know, we have to figure out the right answer for our state as a whole and for our specific district. How can we provide this really important care to our, to our people, but at the same time not burden especially our small business owners? So I look forward to the input of all the county commissioners and other, other community leaders to better find solutions on the state level.
Thank you very much. And Rachel, we'll finish with you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I too believe that healthcare is a human right. In this pandemic, I think we've seen what happens when people don't feel confident with their access to healthcare. I also think that one of the ways that we can save costs, which I know many of you work diligently on every day is preventative measures, making sure people stay healthy, they, making sure our children have access to healthcare so they have healthy beginnings in life, I think is really crucial. And that does in the long term, save us a lot of money down the road. This is also a federal problem. And so the short answer to this is really, I think that those who can pay should pay. I, I would never advocate to take healthcare away from anybody or restrict that access. But it sounds like those who can pay should pay is not our small businesses. And so without being a total expert on, on this issue, I absolutely would love to chat with you more and hear more about how this impacts our, our communities.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Kula, you can take the second question.
All right, thank you, Chair. First of all, thank you to Kathy from Columbia County for getting me online. So shout out to great staff and thank you to the three of you for stepping forward. So my question is really one that has been touched on with the comments about the forests and natural resources in the ocean. But it's, I feel like it's particularly important since 75% of drinking water comes from forested landscapes, is what's one water issue in your district that you are aware of and that is urgent? And how would you start addressing at least in the next year? Because it's not just session, as people have noted. And I'd be happy if you had a different one than the other person. And I will go with Nadia first and then to Melissa and then to Rachel. And thank you for all of your service here.
Thank you, Commissioner Kula. I love your backdrop there, that gorgeous oak, it's just so appropriate. Are you in his vineyard too?
It's a real background, it's not a virtual one, but it is a black walnut.
Oh, it's black walnut, my apologies. This is my thing, abundant and clean drinking water. Yes, I'm, I'm all about it and I think it, again, is a human right. I'm on my local, I'm elected to my local water district board and we're in the process of buying our 1,500 acre drinking watershed right behind my house. And we've raised the funding that we need to buy it, $5.5 million. We're going to manage it for timber, drinking water, wildlife and recreation. It's amazing. And I'd love to talk to any of you about how we've made that happen because we'd love to see it happen more throughout the state and down the coast and up the rivers. But, you know, we're a pretty privileged little community here in Arch Cape. There's lots of people in our rural areas that are on individual and small group systems that are not, in the summer times, they go dry, sometimes the wells go bad. And some people don't even have water and that's unacceptable in 2022. And so that's something that I really am worried about and feel like is kind of off the radar. And people just like to talk about cities and water districts when they come, talk about drinking water. But there's all these people scattered throughout the landscape that are particularly vulnerable to sediment in their drinking water as well, as well as other pollution. And we need to make sure that they have clean, abundant drinking water consistently just for basic human health. And so I'm going to take our story to Salem and I'm going to keep working on this issue over time so that we can make sure that we can protect our, protect all of our people and, and they can have as great a drinking water as I'm lucky to have here on the North Coast.
All right, thank you very much. We have really good drinking water, so I might want to fight you on that one. Melissa, same question, do you, do you remember?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Kula. Well, I, I will not give the same answer specifically because of your request to try to mix it up. I do want to give a head nod to Nadia though, and also to all folks on the North Coast who are in this call, just because in my time over the last eight weeks of running this campaign, I have been hearing a tremendous amount about the concerns of safety with drinking water on the North Coast. So I just want to acknowledge that, but I won't talk about it specifically. I, I guess what I would say is I'm really interested in learning more from our county commissioners here in Columbia County and working with our commissioners here in Columbia County about what we can do to protect the waterways that we so cherish. I know that in, in this county and really across this district, you know, that we, we appreciate our waterways, both for our fresh drinking water, but also for the recreation that it brings our communities from fishing to boating and to hiking along those beautiful trails that take us to Beaver Falls. There are so many incredible things to see and be a part of. And I know that to the previous question, that Commissioner Chair, Hi Mueller, asked about Port Westward, and that, that has been something I've heard from folks that have concerns about what that, that development might look like. And so I would love to learn about, about how we can balance those things because I think there is a critical interest in mitigating risk while also doing the other things that we enjoy along those waterways. So thank you very much.
Melissa, and Rachel.
Thank you. One of the ongoing issues I've heard a lot about is how timber impacts our waterways in the district. And I know every single one of you I have talked to about this issue is, is aware. And so the first thing I would do is really support those agreements between the, the industry that we rely on in this district and also making sure that our, our waterways are clean and clear and that we have access to safe and healthy drinking water. The second thing I have heard a little bit about, which I think is an issue statewide and I think is also coming up in the legislation, legislative session. My understanding is that really throughout the state, there are legal cannabis grows where folks are taking water resources and, and, and in some places, that's a, that's a serious problem as we deal with drought increasingly. And so that legislation is certainly something I would support, how we can impact that. And third, you know, I, I'm here to learn from the experts. I think you all are doing great work in your communities around this issue. I've learned a lot from each of you. And so I would really love to visit your communities and take a tours of different facilities and the work that you're doing to really get that visual idea and to gain more understanding of how you approach this issue and how I can support you.
Great, thank you very much. And I think over to Commissioner McGruder.
Thank you all and thank you, Commissioner Kula, for that question because it highlights the Association of Oregon Counties' water forums that we are being, putting together. And I invite other counties to participate. Thank you. Wow, that was it, Yamhill County, you were, you were the end. Great questions, great answers. And now we will have closing statements from each candidate. Again, alphabetically with two minutes each. Rachel Armitage, please.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for taking the time to have this conversation on behalf of your constituents today. I am honored to be joined by two incredibly intelligent and caring women, one of whom is running for this seat. It is also a great privilege to be one of three women considered to follow the inimitable Senator Betsy Johnson. Her years of service to this district will be remembered. In my conversations with many of you, I've heard your concerns about addressing our housing shortage, supporting the industries we're proud of and ensuring access to living wage jobs, bringing relief to a stressed healthcare system and caring for our environment. This pandemic has been really tough for our families and our federal delegation has passed record infrastructure legislation and historic pandemic relief. So I will continue to connect these programs to the district and hold agencies implementing these programs accountable. If appointed, you can count on me to keep in touch. I will be in touch regularly with you and other local leaders in the district and will host a town hall in every county of the district at least once. I will also attend as many Grange, Rotary, Union and Church meetings as possible to meet constituents where they're at. I plan to spend all my time and energy serving out the remainder of the current term and will not be running for any office in 2022. I support Melissa and I think she will make a great senator. I am sharing a screen with 24 county commissioners who care about the communities they serve, who want to see constituents housed, working living wage jobs and thriving. You deserve a legislator who will partner with you, ensuring that much-needed funding and support makes its way to you. It would be an honor to fill that need and continue this district's legacy of independent and effective leadership in Salem.
Thank you, Rachel. Our next speaker will be Melissa Bush. Welcome, Melissa.
Thank you all so much for having us here today and joining together. Thank you all for the time that you've put into this process during your holidays and in this busy time of the new year. As a nurse, I travel this district of ours. I see folks from every walk of life. I have driven up many a driveway to houses with flags flying, pledging allegiance to a wide range of political and social interests. Yes, that includes timber unity, it includes signs that praise Joe Biden as well. And yet, I walk in, I sit down at the kitchen table and I care for each of those patients and their families the same, no matter their viewpoints or their politics. I show up. I listen to our community members, I share their concerns and I genuinely want to find solutions to the problems that they face. There are many members of our communities across Senate District 16 who are experiencing legitimate struggles. Each and every one of those people would be my constituent if appointed. I am an expert in healthcare. I am an expert in caring. I am an expert in solving critical problems that can mean life or death. If appointed, that is what I will bring to the table. That is why I received 73% of the vote out of the eight candidates that put their names forward in the nomination. That is why I have the endorsement of the Oregon Nurses Association that represents nurses and healthcare workers across Senate District 16. It's also why I have the endorsement of a current legislator, healthcare leader, Representative Rachel Prusak, who is the Chair of the Committee on Healthcare. You can count on me to listen, to learn, to advocate and to work as part of the team that we are. That is what I do every day as a nurse and it is what I will keep doing as your Senator of Senate District 16. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Now we come to Nadia Gardner. Nadia, please.
Thank you. And there you have it, three smart, capable and dedicated women for the interim Senate position. I like Rachel and not running for the seat because continuity is critical in a time of crisis. I encourage you to support Melissa Bush, who is running for the seat. That will enable you all to work together more effectively after she wins in November. And I know she will. But if for one reason or another, you don't want to visit, vote for Melissa, I ask for your vote. So who am I and what would I bring to Salem? As noted, I'm a scientist. I love to learn and do research, like most decision makers. I'm not an expert in all of our community issues. The past month has been so much fun for me, delving into diverse topics, including housing, healthcare and natural resources. Beyond reading late into the night, I've so enjoyed meeting with many of you as well as other community leaders and hearing about local issues and solutions. I'm solutions focused. I see a lot and I hear a lot about our community's challenges and I hear a lot of complaining. The next step is to find the right solutions. As a scientist, I seek out solutions with strong data proving that proposed policies are the right approach. I also know that some solutions are not politically feasible and I'm pragmatic, pragmatic and reasonable enough to recognize there are multiple pathways to the right outcomes. Perhaps most importantly, I'm a convener. As problems are presented, I like nothing better than bringing people together because we are truly stronger together. The past two years has been challenging in that respect, but a silver lining is that techno, technology is more widespread available and sophisticated. For those of us who have good internet, and I know that is not a given, we've had new opportunities to meet where we are and reach more people who maybe wouldn't have attended a meeting or an event in person in the past. If we've learned anything from the past two years, it's that too many people in our communities are living on the edge and it's going to take serious collaborative work to rectify the situation. If chosen to be your interim state senator, I promise to give it my all and represent you to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Nadia. Thank you all. Now, we will, I will read the statement regarding the allotment of votes. In accordance with ORS 171.062 and ORS 171.064, when a vacancy occurs in a legislative district encompassing two or more, more counties, each county is entitled to one vote for each 1,000 of its electors or major fraction of 1,000, more than 500 registered electors, but less than 1,000 residing within the district at the time the vacancy occurred. However, any county having electors in the district shall be entitled to at least one vote. Each county commissioner is allotted the following number of votes. Clatsop County, 31 votes per county, 6.20 votes per commissioner. Columbia County, 41 votes per county, 13.66 votes per commissioner. Multnomah County, five votes per county, one vote per commissioner. Tullamook County, 14 votes per county, 4.66 votes per commissioner. Washington County, 18 votes per county, 3.60 votes per commissioner. Yamhill County, one vote per county, .33 votes for commissioners. These votes are apportioned to each county commissioner. If for any reason a county commissioner is unable to attend the meeting today, January 14th, 2022, that county commissioner's votes would not be cast. The votes are not reapportioned for the remaining county commissioners to cast. With that, we will take a 15-minute recess and we will return at, let's see, 15 minutes, 25, 11:35. Is that correct? Did I do my math properly, J.C.? Perfect. All right, we'll see you in a bit. All right, we'll see you in a bit.